Welcome back, everybody. I'd like to call our meeting back to order if you would please. It's time for our recognitions and awards. And Laura Lee, would you please begin with us, please?
Thank you. I'd like to welcome some very, very special guests here tonight, as well as our business partners. And I'm going to begin by asking Mr. Jim Smith, our Director of Community Development, to come forward for the business partner recognitions, of which he's actually going to be a part of one of those. Our first recognition is going to be for the Sisters Cities delegation to Ocotlin, Mexico. And I'm going to ask people, as you come forward, to please come up the center aisle just as soon as I call your name or your group. Don't come up the side aisle because we don't want anyone to trip over the camera. Bev Wittenborn, Zenny Schmidt, Jim Smith, who's already up here, Maureen Donegan, Wilma Wilcox, Ruth Nelson. And there were two members of the eight-member delegation who were not able to attend but are, I think, with us in spirit tonight. Karen Hooven, Assistant to the Mayor, and Rick Miller, Director of Johnson County Extension Service. These eight delegates traveled to Mexico on August 21st for the formal signing of a Sisters Cities agreement with the City of Ocotlin, Mexico, culminating two and a half years of work. Bev Wittenborn represented the city as a city council member in the formal signing duties and as delegation spokesperson. Zenny Schmidt provided outstanding translation and communication services. Jim Smith represented not only the school district in his role as community development director, but the chamber in looking for business connections. Maureen Donegan provided understanding of the culture as our social sciences district coordinator and observed the educational system for potential future exchange connections. And Rick Miller, who's not with us tonight, worked with the local farmers to establish a long-term relationship of mutual benefit to our two communities. The Sisters Cities agreement is designed to be a working, shared relationship with opportunities for both communities, including many of our students, to benefit. We welcome Sisters Cities as a partner with our district and particularly with our 21st Century International Studies program. And I just realized, I didn't mention Ruth and Wilma when I was talking about what people did, so I want to mention that now. Wilma represents not only Rotary Exchange but also Sisters Cities and speaks the languages and is a world traveler and so handy to have along on any trip. And Ruth Nelson serves in the Community Development Department and does all the behind-the-scenes work for these trips. Next, we'd like to recognize Amley Clear Creek. Robin Clark, Sales and Marketing Coordinator is here with us. We're welcoming Amley Clear Creek as a district partner. They've already worked with Mark Heck, Principal of Bentwood Elementary, on providing Halloween treat bags for the school's Bike-A-Thon. And there's a potential in this partnership to connect with the district's Building Trades Program, the Interior Design Classes, and Community Service Projects. Robin is the Sales and Marketing Coordinator for Amley Clear Creek, which just opened in August with one-to-three-bedroom apartments. And she has a degree in elementary education and directed an after-school program in a neighboring district for four years and has been the facilitator for Emporia State's Johnson County campus. So she's a wonderful asset to our community. Please help us welcome Robin and Amley Clear Creek as a district partner.[242.01][242.01][applause] Now, we'd like to recognize the State Farm Good Neighbor Grant for the See Yourself in College program, Deborah Sweeney and Harlan Parker. You've heard about the See Yourself in College program this evening and how it helps connect some of our underserved students with the very real option of attending college. There's always a cost attached to these effective innovative strategies, and school districts are not always able to do everything they would like to do for students, including those programs that have been proven to make a difference. We're very fortunate in our district to have the generous support of some of our community partners. And tonight, we are honoring Mr. Harlan Parker, one of our board members, and Ms. Deborah Sweeney, Debbie Sweeney, who are representing State Farm Insurance, for the donation of $6,000 in a combination Good Neighbor Grant and some personal donation to support the See Yourself in College program. So we're not only able to continue the program at Indian Trail and Oregon Trail, but we are now able to expand it to Santa Fe Trail and Pioneer Trail. So please help us give them a hearty thank you.[327.02][327.02][applause] Do we have any family members here, Mr. Parker? Ms. Sweeney?
[inaudible]
Oh, I'm sorry. Next, we'd like to recognize Regency Place and Westview Elementary Schools. I'm asking the Principals, Greg O'Burney and John Harris, to come up, along with Earl Martin, our Director of Elementary Education, and whoever else. I don't know if you're asking others to come up with you now, or you're going to introduce them after you get up here. It's your choice. Come on down. If you want your Dream Teams. Okay. This has just been a banner year for the Olathe District Schools with not one but two National Blue Ribbon School Award winners out of a total of only five for the entire state. The National Blue Ribbon School Award, under the No Child Left Behind Act, recognizes schools for being academically superior and for making dramatic gains in student achievement in schools with more than 40% of students from disadvantaged backgrounds. At Regency Place, students started out with high achievement scores. For example, a 91.8% of students achieving proficient in reading or better in reading in 2001, which was already well above both the state average and the state standards. And then they just kept getting better every year, up to 98.8% proficient or higher in reading and 100% proficient or higher in math. At the Westview Elementary School, the community has decided that no challenge is too great to overcome. Out of 220 students, Westview has one of the most diverse populations in the district. The school is home to a large English language learner population, two life skills classrooms, 22% of the students receive special services, and 60% qualify for free and reduced lunches. In 2001, Westview was labeled a failing school under the No Child Left Behind Act. In 2002, the school won the first of four Challenge Awards from the Confidence in Public Education Task Force. And by 2004, the students had achieved the standard of excellence in reading and math. I think each of the Principals would like to say a little word of thanks and congratulations to their hard-working parents, their supportive staff, and their outstanding students.
In 1999, Regency Place opened its doors for the first time, and I can tell you the last thing on our minds was achieving a Blue Ribbon Award at that point. As my staff will let you know, they were more concerned about, where's my classroom? I can't find my classroom in this great big school that has empty classrooms, a concept really alien to us now, as well as, look at all those empty file cabinets that eventually disappeared as school began. They were worried about getting to know each other as colleagues, since we had the best staff across the entire district, and creating a learning environment that was going to be very suitable for our kids that were coming from Bentwood and Heatherstone. Now, what they didn't know is that while they were concerned, their principal was equally concerned. Here were my thoughts at that time. How am I going to take 29 all-star teachers, the best across the area, and get them to work in a magical synergistic kind of way? Now, back then, we started with 29 staff members and 400 students. I also was wondering, how am I going to get parents to buy into this new school, take ownership, and be part of their community? Most importantly, how am I going to get students to achieve and learn? Flash forward to 2006. 700 students, 47 staff members, a new building addition, and once again, despite these changes, the Dream Team remains. At that time, in 1999, I had 27 people that were onboard. Throughout the years, we have retained 15-plus staff members. So I'd like those original Dream Team members to stand forward, wave your hand, let us Of course, since that time, we've continued to add family members to our Dream Team family. So, everybody at Regency Place, stand up. Wave. Shout it out.[626.66][626.66][applause] As I conclude, please note that this Blue Ribbon Award represents many things. It represents teachers working with students after school as they prepare for Kansas Assessment. It represents parents volunteering in classrooms every day. It represents students setting personal best goals for assessments. It represents every school in Olathe that implements their school improvement plan. It represents district staff providing quality staff development on teacher learning days. And finally, it represents our Olathe Board of Education as they support quality publication for all. Finally, Regency Place knows and is very excited about this award, along with the rest of you. And we know we've had lots of support along the way, and we know and anxiously look forward as we prepare students in Olathe for their future. Thank you for this honor.[681.07][681.07][applause]
Shoot, I should have gone first.[691.19][691.19][laughter] Lesson learned. I just wanted to take this opportunity, on behalf of our staff and students, to thank the Board of Education for this wonderful chance to let people know what's going on in Olathe public schools and especially what's happening at Westview. We've been around for a long time, and we've had quite an interesting history. And I'll still remember the day as I sit here and look at Dr. Banikowski and Jerry Renaud, my first visit to Westview School when I was interviewing for this position, and how they just brought me onboard and brought me under their wing, and they have been there beside me and behind me the whole way. So I want to thank not only the Board of Education for your support and the opportunity to work with such an incredible group of students and families and the most wonderful staff I could ever ask for. And I want to thank the district administration, along with Earl and Luann and Mary and Kathy and Jerry and Allison and all of those people who have been there with me through the tough times and are here to celebrate with us as we get to the good times. I want to recognize my staff. I could not have done this without them. Not one person could do what goes on at Westview. So I want to thank Carrie and Marcia and Sonia and Jill and Chris and Jen and Janie and Debbie and Denise and Colleen and Jennifer and Angie, you're back there, and Becky and Susan, my secretary, and Peggy, and all of the people who couldn't be with us this evening but are represented by this astounding, incredible, committed group of teachers that I have been so, so fortunate to work with for 10 years. Dr. All you said at the beginning of the year, "Dare to dream." I don't know that I ever dreamed this would happen, but this truly is a dream come true for our building and for our students, and it will be an honor that will be very, very special to us forever. Before I go, I've just got to thank my family. My wife Linda is here tonight. She's been with me from the beginning. Way back. We go way back. And she's been there for the good times, and she's been there, she's a wonderful shoulder to cry on, and she's a great ear. And I know my mom and dad are thinking of me tonight. They are so incredibly proud of this. They just, you can't imagine how this has affected my family. And my son Kyle is with us in heart tonight. He's busy at school doing all the right things, and we're so proud of him. But I just want to say thank you to everybody. And I've been asked, we get opportunities now to talk about, to tell our story. What did you do? How did you turn things around? What's the secret to Westview? And I don't know that I could encapsulate it, but someone much wiser and much more loving and caring and committed to children and education than I am once said, "We can do no great things, only small things with great love." And everything that happens at Westview is done with love for children, for each other, for our families, for education, and we appreciate the opportunity.
Come on down.
Wildcats, come on down.
Yeah, you think so?
Just changed.
Yeah. Went to a wedding one time.
Better to boundary here.
And I said, and I gave the minister, I said, "Get the way."
Only if she gives him permission to be.
Word day.
Mr. O'Burney.
Congratulations. You betcha. Good job, great job.
Congratulations, Greg. You're right. Our next recognition is going to be for two outstanding teachers. Josh Anderson, Olathe Northwest High School, and Brent Cherry, Prairie Center Elementary School. And I'd like their Principals, Dr. Gwen Posse and Natalie Browning, to come forward also. Brent is a fourth-grade teacher at Prairie Center Elementary School. He's been teaching for 27 years, 17 of those in our district at Prairie Center. He says every day is an adventure, and the students keep him interested and on his toes, and that he works with the greatest staff ever. Josh is the debate and forensics coach at Olathe Northwest High School, and in fact, two of his students placed eighth in the Nationals this summer and have been ranked the number-two team for the school year. He's been teaching for 10 years, four of those in Olathe. As a teacher, he's particularly motivated by the diversity of challenges faced by his students. Every year, schools across the district nominate a member of their faculty for the Teacher of the Year. This year, Brent and Josh were among those chosen by their peers. After a screening and selection process, a district committee selected Josh and Brent as our district finalists. Then they go through another round of competition at the regional level. This year, our district finalists went on to achieve honors in the region. Mr. Brent Cherry is the 2007 Kansas Teacher of the Year Regional Semifinalist for elementary level, and Mr. Josh Anderson is the 2007 Kansas Teacher of the Year Regional Finalist for the secondary-level teachers. And Gwen, would you stay up here, please? Our next recognition is for Sue Rippey, who's also an Olathe Northwest teacher. And I've asked her principal, Dr. Gwen Posse, to stay up here with her. Three years ago, in the fall of 2003, Sue Rippey helped launch the 21st Century Aerospace and Engineering Program at Olathe Northwest High School. The program integrates high-level curriculum with hands-on experiences to prepare students for potential careers in engineering and aviation. Along the way, Sue has been instrumental in connecting students to more than a dozen internships with aerospace, engineering, and aviation businesses, and garnering scholarship opportunities of more than $100,000 from various colleges and universities. She just returned from a trip to Washington, D.C., where she was honored as the 2006 National Air Force Association Teacher of the Year. The award is given to a teacher of public, parochial, or private school, kindergarten through 12th grade, who demonstrates excellence in furthering the concepts of aerospace technologies in the classroom. She said being at the national convention and conference where she received the award was one of the most thrilling and humbling experiences of her life, as she rubbed shoulders with career military personnel, many of whom were recently returned from serving in the Middle East, as well as the Secretary of the Air Force and many high-level executives from the aerospace industry. So she was also able to make many invaluable connections that will pay huge dividends for her students now and in the future. This is not her first award. In fact, she was named Kansas Teacher of the Year in 2000, but she said this award was connected to the program that has been the greatest challenge and accomplishment of her career. Do you have any family members, Sue? Do you have any family members here? Would you please?
Cliff, would you stand?[1349.01][1349.01][applause]
And Gwen, don't go away.[1355.41][1355.41][laughter] Because now, we would like to recognize Dr. Gwen Posse, Principal of Olathe Northwest High School. And I'm going to ask Ann Sanders, Director of Senior High Education, to come up here with her. This has been an exciting month for Gwen. She's been named as one of only 60 Principals nationwide to be a member of the first-ever College Board Leadership Institute for Principals, which is nicknamed CBLIP. The institute is made possible through financial support from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. And as a member of the CBLIP, Gwen will participate in three leadership sessions in November, March, and July, and will have an onsite mentor. The institute topics will include change, communication, consensus leadership, culture, data-driven decision-making, does that sound familiar? And organizational development. Her second recognition comes from her high school alma mater, Ottawa High School. In late September, she was inducted into the Ottawa High School Wall of Honor, the highest honor that the high school can bestow on a graduate. In high school, Gwen was a member of the first-ever girls' track team. She went on to attend the University of Kansas, where she won the Big Eight Indoor 60-meter hurdles and the Big Eight Outdoor 100-meter hurdles her senior year. After earning a bachelor's degree, she went on to earn two master's degrees, one in physical education and one in educational administration. Within four years, she also earned a doctorate. And then, we're very pleased that she came to work for the Olathe School District and has been here with us for several years. We're very honored to have Dr. Gwen Posse as a member of our team here in Olathe School District. Okay, did you have any family members here, Gwen? Okay.[1486.33][1486.33][laughter]
Well, congratulations to everyone. It's now that time in our agenda where we have time for public comments. As of the start of our meeting this evening, there was no one signed up to speak. So I'll ask if there's anyone in our audience this evening who wishes to address the board in public comments. Seeing no one, we'll dispense with public comments and move on with the remainder of our agenda. Board members, we're going to go back under the presentation items, under the Junior High Enrollment Growth Updates, Section 2.05. Are there any further questions for Mr. Growlop or comments related to this report? We're going to make it easy on you, Chris. There you go. Thank you very much. The last item under this section is our Annual Energy Report, and Mr. Bob Courtney is going to present this item. Welcome, Mr. Courtney.
This'll be the exciting world of utilities.[1548.33][1548.33][laughter] I thought it was going to be bad enough to follow all of the DVD and video presentations earlier, and, boy, this is a tough act to follow with all of these awards and honors. The school district energy program started about 14 years ago, and our mission statement that you can see on the screen is to provide the best educational environment for students and staff while efficiently using utility dollars. And that's been our goal ever since this has started. I'm just going to share with you a few highlights of the energy program, because I know it's not the most exciting topic, but it is tied in financially with some of the other things that have been going on in the district. To look at electricity, and our school district measured in kilowatt-hours, some information, the energy program started in the summer of '92. We make all of our comparisons on usage compared to a baseline year, the year before the energy program started, which would have been the '91-'92 school year. At that time, our school district, as you can see on the screen, had 2,200,000 square feet of conditioned space. Since the energy program started, 14 years later, we're up to over 4,400,000 square feet. That's an increase of 93% in conditioned square footage. Plus the fact that, when the energy program started, we had a handful of computers, and we're currently over 9,000 computers in the district. That's an additional factor. All of that electricity accounts for 76% of the total utility budget, and so it is a big item. Of that, the majority of that is lighting, and it's not cooling, as a lot of people would think. And I believe Mr. Pollan would agree with that, being in that business. Charts don't show very well on PowerPoint. I'm going to try to walk you through a chart, starting on the far left-hand side. Very difficult to see. There's a lot of information in the chart, and I'm going to build the chart as I narrate it. The dotted line on the top is a short line, was the first year of the energy program. The very first year, Olathe East High School opened, that's a 275,000-square-foot, all-electric building. When it opened, one of the engineers told me it was drawing more electricity than Baldwin City, Kansas. And I believe him. The bottom line is a dash line. You can see it went down. So even though we opened what would be considered a large energy user, during the first year of the energy program, we were able to decrease our consumption of electricity. And I tend to look at consumption more than cost, because there can be a rate increase and it looks like you're not saving anything. But if you're reducing consumption, yes, you are making a difference. We had 41 buildings prior to the energy program starting. The rest of the chart, you can see the growth as we acquire additional buildings, additions on to buildings, and we're still growing. You can see by that bottom dash line, the consumption of electricity, it took five years to return back to the baseline level of what we had done before. And again, this is 76% of the total budget that we're looking at here. During this energy program, 14 years, we have opened 20 buildings plus additions. That includes two high schools, three junior highs, non-elementary, and six support buildings. And numerous additions went on. In the mid-'90s, we had as many as 18 additions, construction projects going on simultaneously. And for those that work in that industry, you know how it works over any building, doors left open by left open by contractors and so on. The rest of the chart, you can see a blip there in that bottom line as it goes up. That is a weather spike. For those that remember, in the year 2000, 2001, we had six months of record weather, three months of record heat, and three months of record cold. And these are raw numbers. These are right off the utility bills. I process 225 utility bills per month. At the end of the year, we add up all the consumption for all the different utilities that I deal with. You can see the spike there. That becomes an anomaly, but it'll show up again later on in following part of the presentation. The very top line, that's our growth in the school district. You can see where we're 93% larger than we were when we started the energy program 14 years ago. However, the consumption of electricity is only up 41%. The difference between those two lines represents a savings because of a decrease in consumption of electricity. And that difference relates into savings. Had the energy program not been in place, those lines should have paralleled each other, and they are not doing that. The next big area is natural gas, measured in MCF or thousands of cubic feet. Natural gas accounts for 16%, and that's a changing number. It tends to go up as we're going through the years. Between electricity and natural gas, we're looking at 92% of all the utilities. And these are the only two items that I'll be going through tonight. And again, let me build the graph for you. The top line is the same that you saw before. That's the growth of the district in square footage. The bottom line, the dash line, you can see the volatility because of the sensitivity to weather. It's up and down. It's all over the place. Anytime it goes below that horizontal line, we're using less natural gas than we did during the baseline year. You can see the weather spike, again, at the same time period. But the very end of that dash line, it shows that after 14 years, we're using 11% less natural gas than we did 14 years ago. Again, the difference between those two lines represents a saving because of decreased consumption, even though we've added almost doubled the size of the school district. Let me give you one example of how that relates. Here's Tomahawk Elementary School. The highlighted area at the top is our baseline year, '91-'92, when that building, at that time, had 40,000 square feet. Continuing going across the top, natural gas cost $3,900 that year, and the consumption is 1,033 MCF, 1,000 cubic feet. Drop down to the next highlighted area, 15 years later, the '05-'06 year that we just finished. We've put two additions on to this building. It's almost 10,000 square feet larger. That's about a 25% increase in conditioned square footage. At the bottom of that far-right column, we're using the same amount of natural gas as we did 15 years ago. But if you notice the cost, the cost is now almost tripled. And so that's why I prefer to use consumption as a barometer of how the energy program is doing. Projects that we've done, we have a retrofit budget that we use. This happens to be Tomahawk Elementary School. The baseline is the gray line at the bottom of the screen. In the middle is the district goal of every building, being able to save 20%. My immediate supervisor, Dr. Bob Hold, and I set that as a goal when the energy program started, to see if we could get as many buildings as we can up to that level. The dash line going across there is the district average. You can see that we have achieved a district average of the majority of the buildings achieving that 20% savings. As Tomahawks, their cost avoidance, the line is going down. That was during some construction projects, some other things that were going on. We did an ESCO project. ESCO is an energy service company project. We did four elementary schools, went in and did a total lighting change-out. There are approximately this-size fixture, 500 per elementary school. We did a project for Tomahawk, Black Bob, Haven Croft, and Scarborough, all at the same time in that one year. It was a— The lighting project is a quick payback. It's only one- or two-year payback. On two of the schools, we married it with a DDC, a Direct Digital Control System, to be able to help monitor the use of electricity and temperature in the building. That has a 30-year payback. By marrying those two together, we were able to get a 10-year payback, a quick payback with a longer payback. We're in the eighth year of that 10-year payback at this time. You can see what happened as a result of that energy project. That line shot straight up, and it continued to go up. We've done other projects. We've done the outdoor weather stripping on every building in the district now. We placed the library rooftop unit, RTU, and you can see how they're continuing to grow. Another building would be Northview Elementary. You can see, again, they've done very well. We've done projects at that school also, to continue to make them better and stay above the district average. This is one of our older buildings, and we've been able to maintain their savings all the way along. A whole history, that's from when the first year of the energy program, when we saved $370,000. We were still under contract with an energy company that did my training. It was a four-year contract. I will point out that in the last six years, we've been able to have a cost avoidance of over $1 million a year. Last year was our best year for cost avoidance. Cost avoidance simply means money that we've been able to keep in the school district that did not go out to the utility companies. That's a cost avoidance. The accumulation of all that is over $11 million in the 14 years the program's been going on. To benchmark against the national average, looking at energy costs per square foot, and that's for electricity and for a heating fuel, in our case, that's natural gas, there is a commercial building survey done on energy about every four years by the EIA, Energy Information Administration. They do this of commercial buildings and turn in all the results to the Department of Energy. They take a multitude of energy statistics from four and a half million commercial buildings. They take those commercial buildings and break them down into 13 categories. The one I was interested is in educational buildings. And in this chart, the educational buildings includes preschools, K-12, vocational schools, college classrooms, and just looking at electricity and natural gas only. In 1992, they've—the survey that was done showed that educational buildings performed at $0.87 a square foot operating cost. So did our school district. They took another survey in '95, and that's the next X or a dark star, whatever you want to call it, and it had moved up to $0.92 in the '95 survey. The bottom line is how the Olathe District is performing. Again, you can see that one weather spike. It'd been interesting if they would have taken the survey during that year, what it would have done nationally. But that becomes an anomaly. You'll see in the next section how, if you took that out, we have a very smooth transition. Traditionally, we are below the national average on energy costs per square foot. This shows that the '99 survey, the energy cost for education buildings, is $0.93 a square foot. Now, we know that turn of the century, energy costs have really gone through the roof. They took a survey in 2003. I did not get the results of that survey until this summer. A lot of numbers to crunch by the Department of Energy and so on. When I called Washington this summer, was able to get the next number, I was kind of surprised at what it did. It really exceeded what I thought it was going to do. It went to $1.22 as a national average. Where are we? We're still down around $0.80 to $0.90 a square foot. So we've been able to maintain, in spite of what the national average is doing. And thank you for your continued support of the energy program.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. Great report. Any questions or comments, board members? Dr. Drummond?
Wonderful. $11 million.
It is. Very well done.
And it's been through Bob's leadership. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Bob, just a question. Have—
Harlan?
Are all of our schools been retrofitted with new equipment? Energy-saving equipment?
No. We still have a long ways to go. We have more opportunities for more savings out there.
Could we possibly get a report on that, as that would relate to the bond issue? In other words, if we were in a position to where we could provide—the community made the decision to provide those kinds of economic resources, what would we be able to do in the future in regards to energy conservation in the district?
Yes, it would be a big impact, yes.
Could we get that? Is that impossible to make this a part of the bond package, and what the potential is there, if we could be—if we'd be able to do this?
Yes.
That make sense? Okay.
Can do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. We're now on to our consent agenda, Section 5 of our agenda, board members. We have 10 items on the consent agenda tonight. All of—we'll assume we'll take all in one motion for approval unless there is a specific item that you'd like to pull off for separate vote or separate discussion.
Mr. Gilmore, did the consent agenda include the bid items tonight? Are we going to do those items?
We'll do that separately.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gilmore, I have some brief questions on 5.05 and 5.08, please.
Okay, Mr. Churchman, go ahead.
And my first question on 5.05, I'm going to direct towards Mr. Otting. And it's on our new policy on district investment of funds.
Yes.
The way I read the policy that allows us—
Excuse me, Jim. Which one are you referencing? Which one of the—
Policy DFE Investment of Funds.
Thank you.
Yes. The way I read that policy, it allows us annually to select potential bidders for idle funds. And I know that on one of the future action items, there is a bank that is going to be under consideration. So do we—does the policy allow us to go at any point in time throughout the year, or do we need to amend it to accommodate that?
That was not specifically addressed. In the past, practice has been, if an interested bank wanted to present an interest, they submitted an audited financial report and a letter stating that interest. This just came about last month, so I can't remember exactly how that reads in the proposed—
It says that annually, we will select those eligible bidders. And I'm not adverse to being able to bring those on from time to time. I just think that it should be consistent with the policy.
Yeah. It's however the board wants to. If you want to just address that issue once a year, that is fine with me. If you would prefer to address that issue as needed, as a bank presents an interest, I can do that also.
My thoughts to the board for consideration would be, while the policy states that we'll do that annually, that we provide a minor modification that says, "Or as the board in its discretion decides to modify it"—just paraphrasing here. So just a minor point. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Otting.
Dr. Rollup, would you suggest we table this item and bring that back again next month with amended language, or—
Well, it would be at the board's discretion on that, if we could insert just simply the statement annually, we'll publish, and then add a sentence that said, "Any additional eligible financial institutions will be brought to the board as they would arise after that annual—that we do in the July organizational meeting." And I think that's what—why you see that institution being brought forward, because you approve those institutions, you know, at the July organizational meeting. So anything that would vary from that would have to come back to the Board of Education. And so, we can either table it, we can wordsmith it a little bit, but I think I understand what you would like there.
Dr. Rollup, my recommendation would be the last sentence there. It says, "At the Board of Education Annual Organizational Meeting in July, the board will approve the financial institutions." So we just amend that to say, "At the meeting in July," or "As the board determines at any time." I think that—and I would be comfortable if the board is just going forward with that this evening, knowing that that modification will be made.
Betty, do you have that?
In Mr. Otting's opinion and our experience, will that allow many banks to sort of mid-year come out and ask for a bid and begin to encumber our processes?
No. I mean, I think relatively, any bank who's—has expressed an interest is on the list. You know, it—it's just—the preference is not to be doing it every month, you know, to get a list, to make it efficient, and try to stick to it throughout the year. So for efficiency purposes, I—you know, I think there won't be very many modifications to the list.
Mr. Otting, the history says that it's been an exception-type situation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so maybe we just—you know, as long as we leave it at our discretion, we can certainly deny any such bid at any time. But if it makes sense and it's on an exception basis—
Yeah. You're just denying—you're not denying a bid. You're just denying—
Their application.
Their application, right.
Just deferring it until a later time, perhaps.
Yeah, or yeah. For this case, we could have just deferred it till July 1, you know.
Thank you.
And I have just one other brief question on the memorandum—
Excuse me. I just need to make sure we're—what we've decided on this and what the motion's going to be when we—
Let me make a suggestion about this, just to see what y'all—I think—I'd like to see us approve it as presented tonight, and since we are—we do have another institution on here for next month, why don't we have it come back with that minor language change, Mr. Churchman? I just don't want a wordsmith here at the table if we can help it, and then it'll be on the consent agenda next month as well. But we'll at least get this approved as presented, and then we can make that minor change, if that's all right with everyone else.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Okay. And you have another question on that item?
No, I have a question on 5.08, if there are no other questions on that. And this just goes out to Dr. Rollup and Mr. Grollup. Just informational item. I would like for the board to be presented with just a similar-type document that we have on the growth of our other schools. I'd like to just see what the enrollment trends have been at the Mill Creek Center over the last five years, and what it's forecasted to be for the next whatever number of years we have in our crystal ball.
Chris Grollup wouldn't be doing that, because he only does attendance area catchments. But Dr. Shirk, Gretchen Shirk's responsible for those programs, so she has the history of that enrollment, and she can give some either direct answers tonight, or could provide that in written format for the future, whichever you'd like.
And my desire would be written format, just as we consider the different puzzles to the bond—
Yeah, okay.
—going forward.
And I appreciate that request, Mr. Churchman. But Dr. Shirk, I'd also want to reiterate that, you know, that career and technical program is going under a major change nationally, and that there's a lot of other areas in the curriculum that we're not considering currently because—and not offering currently because we just don't have the facility to offer it. And should our facility have those types of capabilities, I think that would be prudent on our part also to look at what the potential is, given having the ability to offer additional opportunities in the career and technical field, in that whole spectrum, in that whole continuum of career and technical education that we have seen.
And I'll just comment very quickly, just based on what we did with the Mill Creek Center Task Force. We know that we're limited, to some extent, by the facility that the program sits in at this time. And as we considered options for the future, we knew that we were hopefully going to have the opportunity to consider opportunities for growth and redevelopment and design of programs.
Good, thank you.
One more comment. I know we've been over that. We had a report, I believe, in February. And sometimes, as time goes by, and we kind of forget those things. And I know there's been some other things done at the federal level now. I know President Bush and Congress has—have allocated additional money for career and technical field, and see this as a big issue. And I don't want us to miss the opportunity that we have in this either. We have a lot of opportunities here, probably more opportunities than we have resources. But I don't want us to miss this opportunity, just like I don't want us to miss the opportunity in energy savings, but to make sure that we do the best that we can do here to explore those opportunities and to make use of those opportunities as best as we can, and the resources that we have to do that with. So maybe another brief report to us in regards to, hey, this is the potential. This is what this thing could look like.
We could bring all of that back next time for a report.
Mrs. Wohlm?
Yes, on accounts payable, Mr. Deener, just a question on, do we have a cap for the amount of deposit or revenue that we have in a particular bank, so to protect— amount of deposit or revenue that we have in a particular bank, so to protect that revenue of, of checks that we write or income and outgo? Do we, are we required to have a cap? Do we have a philosophy on a cap, that amount of money that's in a particular bank?
Are you referring to the pledges or the securities behind the money that's invested? Or just how much? We have a working bank.
Yes.
For which all the dollars are involved.
Right. Is there security with that working bank as far as?
Yes.
Okay.
I might ask Randy if he has anything else to add on that.
If I understand, are you interested in pledging?
I'm, I'm probably not wording it. I guess...
You're referring to the operating account.
Exactly.
Not, not the idle funds.
We have one operating account, and all transactions flow through that operating account.
Okay.
Is it otherwise pledged?
Yes. We have, the district has one checking account, and all transactions go through that checking account.
So beyond the FDIC insurance limit for that account, it's, it's otherwise pledged with collateral from that institution?
It's pledged with collateral, that's typically a US Treasury notes or US government agency bonds. And they're, they're not, the state requires them to be 100% collateralized, and I look at 105%. I usually keep it at 105% of the balance.
Okay.
Do we have a target balance for that, Mr. Otting, that we typically strive to achieve in there?
Zero.
Zero.
I...
Thank you.
The, I mean, the less cash I have sitting there, it means it's invested somewhere else in an, in an investment. So it's earning more interest somewhere else than it is sitting in the bank, so.
Can you assure our public that our checks don't bounce?
I think I'm bonded, so.
I appreciate, I guess, just in going through the accounts payable, I was surprised at the large amounts.
There's quite a large amount of checks that are written, never mind, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on consent agenda items? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I would move we approve the items as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Drummond, and thank you, Mr. Churchman, for, was that Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
For the second?
Does that include that slight, slight modification?
Does not.
Does not, okay.
We'll bring that back.
You're gonna bring that, okay, thank you.
So it's as, as the consent agenda as presented?
Okay.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polin?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Onto section six of our agenda, action regarding bids, contracts, and agreements. We have six items here, and the recommended motion is to approve those, except for rejection of the bids for teacher workstation systems. Are there any questions or comments on any of these items?
Mr. Gilmore, I have a brief question on 6.06.
Okay. Network copy or printer contract proposal?
And I'm not sure who the appropriate individual is, but I just, maybe it's Mr. Deener. What's the funding source for that?
Capital A.
Okay, thank you. That's all that I have.
Okay.
I have a question on 6.04.
All right. I just have a concern that we only have one vendor that has provided a bid on that. And I know, was there, I know there was a reason stated that it was, they, they didn't wanna bid, or?
You know, I wish I could, I wish I could get, force these vendors to bid more often on these, but you get what you get. We sent out to six different vendors, and we contacted each one of them. Some of them didn't have a resource for a particular brand on the bid that we were bidding. Some of them just didn't feel like they could bid that big a project at this time, and, and so we got one vendor responding.
Do we solicit our, our bidders, and this may sound like a duplicative question, but do we ask them for feedback as to why they're not bidding or any kind of recommendations they may wanna give us to improve the opportunity for them to bid?
Actually, both Lynn Boshen and I contacted each one of these particular vendors to find out why they didn't respond. Two of the vendors did not respond to our request for why they didn't bid, and the others gave us a variety of, of reasons. Two of them didn't, didn't handle that particular brand of product and didn't respond. The others felt like they could not respond to that larger bid at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Miss Polin? Oh, I'm sorry.
Since given that, do you think this is a pretty competitive price for?
We do. This is a very high-end rooms over there. These are rooms that Dr. Banikowski uses, Mary Matthews uses, everyone uses over there. They are heavily, heavily used. So it has to be very high-end equipment. It has to be, we have to be able to, to maintain it and manage it. It has to be able to split off into three different rooms, each one with their own separate system, or to be able to open them up into one big room. So it's not just a standard, small classroom-type presentations, equipment like we've had in the past with the digital classroom bids. It's really more high-end product.
So it's more than overhead projector?
Absolutely. If that's all it was, we would've done it a long time ago. And we've, we've been putting this project off. It's needed to be done for quite some time. Dr. Banikowski's shaking her head, yes, please do it soon. Even with this bid, we're not gonna be able to get into the rooms until winter break to do it, simply because of the scheduling in the rooms, and we're having to improvise with the equipment there. Right now, we have a, a part completely failed right now. We're not real, willing to put the cost into repairing that part because it's just such antiquated equipment, and so we're just kinda limping along right now. So yes, we do feel like this is a good bid, and we are ready to move forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Polin?
Got a question on, what, 6.03, the furniture for P L, the Prairie Learning Center? Just, we beat the architect's estimate by about, what, $90,000, and we were able to do that without any compromising any specifications?
That's true.
That's true.
Way to go.
We just paid for this other room.
Dr. All, I think you're finally gonna be able to afford to pay us.
I'll put that on my list to do.
If there are no other comments or questions?
One more.
Mr. Parker?
Sorry. When you put your sticky notes in, you have to go back and look each page and remember, and I made myself know, and I had, I had a sticky note on, back on the, which one is this?
6.05. I noticed, I noticed in the comments, talking about the 2.3 million messages of which only 455,000 were considered legitimate. So what happened to the other one and a half million?
They go into a holding bank for a very short period of time. Some of them, some of them just delete within about 24 hours.
So how are we screening those?
We have a, a software that screens those. It's called Proofpoint, and it's actually a, a new software that has an appliance with it this year, so that we can really fine-tune what's getting through and what's not getting through. And I think everyone, every staff member in the district knew when we turned that appliance on, because it's a little more granular than our previous appliance. Previously, we were, we were really blocking a few too many. Some of the good things were not getting through. So we, we went to a new vendor, and we are continuing to fine-tune it. It's just an enormous task to keep all of this junk out of our email boxes. And you're right, 2.3 million, that was in the month of September, partly August, partly September, when I wrote this report. And just a few over 400,000 were really legitimate emails.
So as fast as technology changes and software changes, how do we know that we've got the, the best for the cost?
I would like to refer to Chad Sheridan, our network manager, on that, because he really stays up to tune on that, and I can bring you back some additional information if you'd like me to on, on that subject.
Okay.
I think we, I think we do an amazing job in the district compared to hearing, hearing other districts talk, hearing other businesses talk, hearing people talk about what they get in their home email. I think we do an amazing job of keeping that out. Spammers are very creative, very creative.
We haven't had any disabling viruses or anything of that nature, have we?
We have not.
It's effective.
Now, that doesn't mean that at, from time to time, we don't have a computer with a virus on it. That does happen. But we have not had any, any downtime from viruses.
Nothing that's network-wide, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
Mr. Gilmore, I will move that we approve bids, contracts, agreements as listed, except reject all bids for teacher workstation systems.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Churchman, for that motion, and Ms. Ashley, for the second. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polin?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Other action items, section seven. First item, 7.01, is the naming of elementary school number 33. And you will have several items in our agenda that are recommend, recommended names to choose from, unless you have another one. And Dr. All tells me this is not necessary to have to do tonight if we're not ready to, but what's your pleasure, board?
I would suggest to the fellow board members that we would go for simplicity and name elementary number 33 Woodland Elementary School.
I would second that motion.
I would third that motion.
Oh, man. Thank you, Ms. Ashley, and Dr. Drummond?
What will we do with the new one on Woodland?
What do you mean? That is this one.
Okay, I'm sorry. Duh.
Any further discussion on the motion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polin?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. And that motion carries. Item 702 is the KASB Delegate Assembly. We need to appoint a delegate and an alternate.
Mr. Gilmore, do we have volunteers for this?
Well, I spoke to Mr. Parker previously, and he said he is going to certainly be in attendance there and be willing to serve as our delegate. And I'm gonna catch Mrs. Wilhelm in the middle of a sneeze here. She volunteered to be our alternate delegate. And that suits us, me just fine, if it does the rest of you. And if so, we'll need to, separate motions, I assume, the way this is written out in our agenda.
I would make a motion to appoint Mr. Parker as our delegate and Ms. Wilhelm as our alternate to the KASB Delegate Assembly in Wichita, I think in December, December 2nd.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Drummond and Mr. Churchman. Any discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mr. Polin?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polin?
Yes.
And that motion passes. We also need a motion for the alternate. I guess we could've done that in one motion, couldn't we?
I think you could.
Did you put them both in there?
I put them together.
Okay, I'm looking at my paper here wrong. Thank you. So we've taken care of that item. Now we're on to 703, setting special meeting dates, time and place, and we continue to struggle with getting everybody together for these special sessions. We have a minimum of two members absent in three different alternative dates, and one of those dates has three members absent. So I always continue to defer back to the, the Thursday that's on our original plan to keep open. We are recording and publishing these meetings for the benefit of the public and also those of you who are not able to attend. So I'll ask, what is your pleasure, board? And I'm looking at the October timeframe, not the November one at this point.
I'd like to make a motion that we keep it on Thursday, October 19th, as originally scheduled.
Okay.
And I would like to second that with the request for a time of 6:00 PM.
While we're making that motion, are we gonna include the November special meeting date in December?
I'm just gonna ask, if there's no objection with that date, let's go ahead and include it in the motion. That's okay. 6:00 PM, okay with everyone?
Yes.
And for the benefit of the public, should we go ahead and talk? Well, we don't have the December one on here, so we can't add that because it's not on the agenda.
The third Thursday in December, we're actually closed for our semester break.
Will we get that month off?
And so...
We'll get that month off.
You know, if you guys would just say yes to everything, I'd bring forward. We could move a lot faster. Now, we'll, we'll be, we'll be, I think, I, I didn't put it back on here because I thought maybe we needed to at least get to October, see how that October meeting works. We'll see how, how fast we're moving along, and, and maybe we can take December off, but I just hate to, to promise you that just right now.
Okay.
Sorry.
So should we pencil in the 14th of December?
I think, I think if, that was one of the days that we looked back one week, so if you would pencil in December 14th, that would be nice.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for the Thursday, by Mrs. Wilhelm, for Thursday, October 19th, 6:00 PM, here at the Education Center, for discussion of bond task force findings for existing facilities and financial implications, seconded by, Mr. Churchman, was that you the second?
That's correct.
Okay. And also for Thursday, November 16th, at 6:00 PM, here at the Education Center. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter?
Mrs. Wilhelm?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Polin?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Future action items in section eight of our agenda, we have a number of items on there coming up for future action, 16 of them, I believe. Are there any questions for Dr. All or staff on any of those items?
Mr. Gilmore, I have two brief questions on 8.15 and 8.16.
Okay, Mr. Churchman?
The first question on 8.15, and it's not a leading question, but I'm just curious as to dedicating land versus selling land.
This is, Chris, one piece of information while Chris is coming up is that I had visited with the city manager on this as well. This came up when the city was working with Kansas State University to, I guess, to survey out the land, that there was a small piece of what they discovered that was with us since, I think, almost the origination of consolidation in the mid-'60s, was not even, I don't believe, in our awareness. And so it was an amount, this is not something that we paid for when we bought the land at Northwest and then, you know, giving back. So that was just a little history that I called to get some clarification on, and I don't know if Chris can give some additional details on this or not.
Dr. All is correct. This is a piece of land that came to Alatha through the creation of the Alatha School District, land dedicated, it's kind of thought for one-room, a one-room schoolhouse that was never built. But what the city's requested is that we do do a quick claim deed and just give the land to the city. To answer your question about dedication versus selling the property there, the city's request was to see if they, if we would just dedicate it to the city.
And would we have any use for this, have we used this in the past for anything? Is it currently being used?
I don't know if, that we've ever used it. I mean, right now, generally speaking, the district's land, there's, Valley, Valley Road separates the school, oh, okay.
We would have no use for it, and in fact, this was considered at the time, if you remember, the city of Alatha purchased almost 400 acres there in that area and then sold us the land for Seaback. And there was consideration at that time of this acre. It just didn't get caught up in all the paperwork at the time. In fact, I was surprised today when Mr. Houghton told me that he didn't. I think that was a part of that agreement at that time. It's so small and so much of it is taken up in right-of-way for College Boulevard, that it's really a space that probably in the last 30 years hasn't been used and really wouldn't be useful for us because so much of it is right-of-way for that street. It sits right on College Boulevard, so it's really not useful.
Very good, thank you.
And it does sit in a, even worse, it sits in a dry creek bed. I mean, there's just really not a lot we could do with it.
Thank you.
So we're sure there wouldn't be a convenience store placed there?
It is, it is a little small for a convenience.
I have another question on 8.16, Mr. Thompson, just want to make sure I understand, just for clarification, that in considering the two proposals, we have two routes to go. One is a completely new design of a school, and then site-adapting is simply taking existing designs and adapting that to the site that's available, is that correct?
That's correct. There are two options, and we've secured proposals from two firms for both options.
Is there any drawback to doing a site-adapting approach?
From, that's a difficult question you ask.
Well, let me say that in lieu of the newest schools that we've done to the South, knowing that those have been recent designs.
Professionally, from my point of view, no, there's not a, there's not a disadvantage to build by site-adapting. That's a plan that took several hundred man-hours by the staff to develop, it was developed new for Madison Place, you know, it's sort of one of those glass half-empty, glass half-full. It's not finished yet, so we don't know if we like it. It's not finished yet, we don't know that we don't like it. And in reviewing it with the TNL staff and in viewing it with technology here recently, I think, I think we believe that it's a very good design and, you know, we would like to move ahead with that, but that's not to say we have to. Certainly, there are other options, and that's why we explored them, and that's really, really more up to you than it is to me, is which path we go down.
Do we feel that's a reasonable cost for that?
Those are very reasonable costs, they're comparable. I didn't have it in the report so far, but at the special meeting, I'll have our costs. It's very comparable to what we paid for Ravenwood, and the site adapt cost is very comparable, the one we're recommending, to cost we've paid in the past for site-adapting in existing design.
Very good, thank you.
I've got a question, the same one, just what, since it's not finished, what have we learned? Are there any modifications we're going to make from Madison Place into this one? Just lessons learned, I guess.
One of the items, one of the items that we do at the end of every elementary school is we have, for lack of a better word, I hate to use military terms, but sort of a debriefing, we'll walk through the school with the new principal, we'll walk through the school with TNL, with technology, with the maintenance staff, everyone that has used the building. We'll try to learn what we can then. You know, today, it's strange, we were just talking about in our progress meeting, from a construction point of view, and that's one of the advantages of building a, of building the same building, if there's not a reason to change it, is that you become more efficient in building it. There are a couple of details we would change that I think would speed it up, and construction, time is money. Faster we can build, fewer man-hours we put into the construction, the cheaper it is, cheap, less expensive it is. And I think today, we discovered a few things that if we changed a few details, probably would speed up the process without adding any material cost. There are a couple of site revisions we invite, but nothing significant.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
I have a question and a comment on 8.02. The banking RFP agreement, just a comment, I think it's really very important that two board members would participate in that RFP process, so when that comes to the board, probably April, May of next year, is that right, Mr. Otting? April, May of next year? When that RFP would, when we would make, be making the decision on that, that we would have two board members that were very knowledgeable and very experienced in the process and how the process went, and who was invited and those, all those issues. So I would strongly suggest that.
Yeah, I think we have that there, that we, that there would be two representatives, and I think there was some, even some discussion.
That's my plan.
About that. So Randy and I have talked, and that will definitely be included there. That's been helpful for us, you know, when we've worked on different kinds of RFPs, to have representatives from the board members, and we'll continue that.
So do we decide that next month, then?
I thought I had already volunteered.
I think Jim and Rita volunteered.
Got it, okay.
And really to that same point, if I could digress for just a moment, under the Investment Review Committee in one of our new policy documents, have we determined who those two initial board members are?
On the...
For the investment of funds, we, and so I think at some point here in the, maybe next month, or even if we want to do it tonight, we should determine who those two will be.
Tonight's fine.
The answer is we haven't decided yet. I don't know that we're prepared to do that tonight, Mr. Churchman, but we'll certainly have it back for next month. We'll discuss it and come back with that next month.
That would be fine.
Yeah, and, you know, I think anybody that's interested could, you know, give either me or Mr. Gilmore their interest, and that would help to...
Thank you.
I wanted...
Go right ahead.
I wanted to acknowledge the efforts of Martha Gilbert and the rest of the staff who was involved in doing the instrument inventory. I am pleased that that is completed. I think it was an excellent thing for, for us as a district to have done, and would just ask, as the RFPs go out for the annual maintenance, that we are cognizant of the fact that there are probably multiple music shops who could do that work, and I would like to make sure that the RFPs are split between instrumental wind instruments as opposed to string instruments, so we give maximum opportunity to anyone who'd like to bid on that. That's not to say that it couldn't end up being the same shop, but I would just want to make sure that we separate those RFPs in the event that it's two different shops. But thank you very much for your efforts on that. I know it was a huge undertaking, but it was important for us to do, and I appreciate it. Good.
Mr. Polan?
I've just got a question again on the student trips. Dr. All, a member of, requested sort of feedbacks, things like we got last month for the, what the trip to, you know, the geoscience trip. I think that's great, I appreciate that, so things like that.
We've got, working with Dr. Sanders, we're trying to get a little system going here, and so it may look different for different kinds of things, to give you some good examples.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Parker?
I have a question on 9.03.
All right, moving on to information items.
Before we do that, Mr. Gilmore, I'm sorry, I should have jumped in there. 8.14 on the part-time employee benefits. I understand very clearly that part of the reason we're doing this, if not the major reason we're doing this, is employee retention. I'm just wondering about some way to try to measure that. This is quite a capital investment for us to do this, and I'm certainly leaning in that direction, and think we should do it probably, but if we could have some way to measure the effectiveness of employee retention. I don't know if we can do that, or how that's done, or if HR people have a way to do those kinds of things, but I think that would be a good process for us to begin, to be able to measure that, to determine that the investment we're making in this is worthwhile to us.
Dr. Drummond, we do measure employee retention, and we would be able to calibrate the effect of the part-time program.
Good, thank you very much.
And Dr. Lutcher, would that also potentially show up in the employee surveys that we do each year?
That's absolutely correct, Mr. Churchman. We'd be able to track it through that mechanism as well.
Good. Kevin? Anything else in Section 8? Okay, let's move to Section 9 under Information Reports, Written Reports. Mr. Parker?
I think Mr. Deener had a question.
I was just going to say that we have seen those representatives here this evening, if you had questions, further questions on that, but seeing none, I guess that's, we would be moving ahead according to the way in which it's been written, I guess.
I'd say so. On the benchmarking comment, the benchmarking conference, Dr. All, was excited to see that this was going to be happening, and I just wanted you to comment somewhat about the outcomes and what we would expect to derive from this. As Mr. Churchman would say, what's the delta?
First of all, Dr. George, this has been one of his projects.
Sorry, who?
Dr. George.
Okay.
This has been one of his projects to move forward, but I think after some earlier discussion last year, we've had these districts as our benchmarking districts, and I know some of you have said, well, who are our benchmarking districts? We've never met these people. And so Dr. George was able to contact, and we decided we would be the first to host this group of districts, and these are the ones that have, that are participating, and we have, I think, five or six that are going to be here. And one of the purposes of this will be to showcase best practices across the districts. Secondly, we're going to have sort of a business meeting, you know, is there, superintendents have turned over in these districts? Are they interested in continuing this? Would, and we have some lead that maybe another school district, St. Louis or Nebraska, would host it next year, and we would rotate through with like staff members, so there will be an opportunity for the superintendents to visit. One of the districts has indicated they're going to bring a board member, any of the board members, any of you that would like to participate in any aspect of this, you can take a look at the schedule, and we will get that out to you. It's kind of a new step for us in this area, and some of these districts, as you recall, are, they're good-performing districts, they fit our demographics more similarly, so they're dealing with some of the same kinds of things that we're dealing with, and we hope that this will be productive. These are not the only school districts we benchmark against, but these were ones that we started for really looking at our quality processes to have a group. We also benchmark against a school districts that have won Baldridge Awards using their scores as well, and then as those come on, we add that to our list of districts, as well as regional, maybe neighboring districts, so.
So this is part of the process of us moving down the path towards a Baldridge Award?
It's one process, yes.
And Dr. George has put a lot of work in this. I mean, he keeps our feet to the fire about dealing with our OFIs, opportunities for improvement, and also opportunities to keep us connected data-wise with other entities, and so this is just one piece of this. So I think it'll be an exciting opportunity here.
And Dr. All, I think you and your staff are to be commended on doing this, this outstanding initiative.
Yeah, I want to echo that. I was going to say, this is one of those areas where we're being innovative, which is one of our board objectives, and it's not, nothing to do with technology, it's being innovative in how we're approaching this, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Dr. George, for your leadership on this.
Just one question, on knowing that each state has different, I think, different standards for NCLB or the criteria that they use, are these states closely aligned to what the state of Kansas criteria would be as far as their standards?
We tend to, when we look at the achievement scores, we're looking more at ACT, SAT, and AP programs, and some of the metrics that are associated with that. You're right, the state assessment scores for the various states are substantially different, and different states are using different approaches and so forth, so it's very difficult to have a valid comparison of assessment scores from state to state. But on the ACT, the AP, the SAT, issues of national merit, et cetera, we are able to get some level of comparison, and so that tends to be the, the student achievement piece that we look at. We also look at a number of other pieces of data that are in our benchmark data gathering instrument, and that we pull together to, to go from there, and we update that on an annual basis, as our staff has additional questions they'd like to ask, or if one of the benchmarking members has questions that they would like to ask.
Well, certainly diversity, you know, if there's a comparison with that, and I heard you say the districts are similar, so those will be major topics that I'm sure will be an emphasis for you, too. One benefit, I'm sorry, go ahead. One benefit, as we're trying to benchmark data, we have to be creative and innovative about getting other districts to be willing to share their data, and so we have to be able to share ours. And so it's not always that easy to go out and say to somebody, we'd like your last five, seven, 10 years of data, and they're going, why should we take, stop what we're doing to go do that? And so the relationship piece we're trying to develop here is that our data maybe can help them benchmark and vice versa, and then we get a core amount of data to really see over time, you know, whether what we're doing is making an impact. Otherwise, it's really, as I said to someone else earlier, it's built on whether you know somebody in a district, whether you can get access to some of that information or not. So this will be a little more systematic group, but not a confined group from what we would look at for benchmarking.
Dr. George, I see that the dates are set for this meeting. Is the agenda and timetable set yet?
The agenda is roughed out, it's being finalized, and we're very close on it. There are some little nuances that we're working through, but it will start with a breakfast on that Thursday morning, and we'll proceed through the day Thursday, and then there will be another breakfast meeting on Friday morning, and we'll go about half a day, and some of the people have flights they have to catch and so forth, and so it'll be all-day Thursday and part of the day on Friday. As soon as that agenda is finalized, we'll get it out to you. We'll make it available.
You know, I know I, for one, would like at least an opportunity for part of that, to stop in and meet the folks.
And we would very much appreciate that as your schedules permit.
Right.
I think this...
Go ahead, excuse me.
I think this is timely in connection with our bond task force and the work that we're doing there, so I don't know if that's coincidental or intentional, but it certainly is timely.
Dr. George, have none of the other Johnson County districts, school districts, expressed an interest in participating?
One of the other Johnson County districts is involved in another benchmarking consortium, and when we started this back in 2001, 2002, the thought was we would have no more than one district per state. And we wanted to have a variety of districts across the country, and so that has been the background on it. Not all consortiums are set up that way, but that's been the model that we've talked about. When we meet face-to-face, and one of our primary objectives will be to establish trust and begin to work together, but we may also talk about, are there other districts that we'd like to invite to join? And if so, should we consider multiple districts per state, or should we stay with the concept of no more than one district per state? And that's a decision that the group may want to discuss and see where we end up on that.
That's hopeful, thank you.
One other question, and that would be, and this may be in the future, or it may not be relevant, but knowing that we're beginning to build a stronger partnership with the city of Alatha, with the city council, and many of the projects that are taking place within the city, is it relevant for any of those people to be in attendance, or to, do you know enough about the others, other districts to know partnerships that they have, and would that be of a discussion that would take place at all in your agenda or parts of your agenda?
Right now, I'm not aware of what relationships those other districts have with their respective cities or city that they're near, or they, or if it's a county-wide district, what their county relationships are. I, that may be an area that we'll want to discuss, and may be an area in the future that we'll want to work with, but right now, I don't know what the others have as a relationship with their respective municipal governing bodies.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to ask a brief question of Mr. Houghton in regard to facility usage, since that's an area that we've discussed in the past. Is there a need for us to review our guidelines as far as facility usage? I noticed that there was some, seemed to be a little bit of dissatisfaction with understanding policy, but is that one of those situations where we choose to acknowledge and understand what we want to understand, as far as the public is concerned?
I was doing good up to the last sentence. Yes, we're reviewing our policies right now. We're also reviewing our fee structures, and what we will do is have a report, probably in the early spring, that will come back with our particular situations.
Sounds good, thank you.
Mr. Gilmore, I just have one brief comment on 9.01. And Dr. All, I know that the staff is very focused on best practices, lessons learned. We've heard a lot about that tonight. As we start to enter into the budget planning season, any key takeaways that emerge from the blue-ribbon designations that the two schools have achieved would be very helpful to hear those back as to how we can cascade those to other schools. I know that's ongoing, just wanted to make that comment, too.
Good. I want to make you aware, if you're not already aware, that the state, the Legislative 2010 Commission visited Westview here a few weeks back to look at some of those very issues that you were just asking about, Mr. Churchman. And I don't know the results of that yet, but I took part, participated in that a little bit, and they were, I think, very impressed by everything they saw, so.
Visited North and Westview and Oregon Trail.
Oregon Trail. All right, anything else? Now we'll need to move on to our executive session, and your eyes are not deceiving you, since we're paid by the minute, we're suggesting 60 minutes for our executive session tonight. So we'll entertain a motion to do that, please. And for the press and members of the audience, we're not planning to take any further action after executive session, so this is our last item.
Mr. Gilmore, I would move that we recess to executive session, discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel, to protect the privacy interests of the individuals, be discussed, and to consult with attorney on matters deemed privileged and attorney-client relationship to protect attorney-client privilege and public interest, and for preliminary discussion related to the acquisition of real property, to protect the public interest in obtaining property to the regular session, return to the regular session at 9:45.
Thank you, Dr. Drummond, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Mrs. Carpenter?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Drummond?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?